All rise, the Harville County Court of Appeals and Countess Sessions. The Harville White Deal will be presiding. This court's main session, the Harville White Deal here.
Go forward, you have an education.
By our heads please. Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, as we assemble this evening and give you thanks for all the blessings it has, say fifty to the store for us. While we pray for our spirit to be with us tonight in the Gulfland County business and things that we do, we ride and talk on my side. We ask you to bless us that we have patience and we remember their need. And we ask your Father to watch over us as we travel from here and go home this evening. Rest assured, there you are when you guide us through the wreckage with our spirit now. And we ask for your wisdom.
Make that a yes. Our place denied by Commissioner Joseph Johnson?
The Legion is to fight the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Lee Adams, Mary Amy Baker, here.
Here.
Ken Bogmacher.
Here.
Jay Burton.
Here.
Troy Nicky.
Here.
Bill Ferguson.
Here.
Jerry Ford.
Here.
Bo Brager. Randy Bellin.
Here.
Christopher Mars.
Here.
Christopher White Deal.
Here.
The Johnsons, here. Christopher Johnsons, here. Rachel Gomes, here. David Nauner.
Here.
Amber Russell.
Here.
Chris Thomas.
Here.
Gary Wall.
Here.
State District.
Here.
Tamara Farm.
Here.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight being present, particularly at the Dallas Gallery. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. First item on our agenda is to approve amendments from September twenty-third, Commission meeting, later in your package. If we have any corrections, please refer to make a motion approved. A motion by Commissioner Wall to approve amendment to the last meeting. And second by Commissioner Christopher Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Amendments are approved. We have a few announcements. The Tennessee County Services Administration Fall Conference starts tomorrow through Thursday at an optional, several of us are going. If you drive in tonight, some drive in early in the morning. Looks like it's gonna be a really good conference, a lot of information to come out of it, and we will do our best to represent the county well and bring back information up to the good news for some of the projects that we're hopefully coming our way into the transportation thing for that nation. One other thing, the surveys that I sent out to everyone last month, I received twelve back. If you haven't done any, please get that to me. I'm waiting on those to do the look over to committee assignments, and I plan to do that this weekend when we get back, so that we have a conference month. And I'll lay them all out to everyone or get no later reports today. The Board of Education is hosting a dinner for the Commission on November fourth, that's next Monday night, at six o'clock at the Elementary School. And this is just a thank you and opportunity to bring us up to date on the progress the public's done at Elementary School, with the recommendation to give you a chance. Last year, we were there and we were showing the things that were going to be done, and this year, we're gonna see what happens. If you can, please be there on the twenty ninth, and please RSVP to Tamara Farm to let her know that you are and how many of you are coming. Also, on November twelfth, Kenny Moore will be at the Community Center to present a drastic concept to the public and the Parks and Rec Committee on the plans for the overall plans for the park, that concept, I guess you could say. So please try to attend that at all possible, that'll be at eleven o'clock.
Yes, sir, it's from eleven to one, and then again from two to six.
Say all twelve.
It's gonna be at the Community Center. We had several amendments to the agenda that came up in work session. Several things are gonna be reached. We have a director's agenda that was passed out tonight. It has these things off of it. There was one budget amendment that we referred back to committee. At Budget Finance Committee meeting, the Charter Review Committee was taken off the talking layers, wanted to make sure he had all the people at one time, and I had to bring it up to three times, so that's why I'm here. And also, the County School before from talking Saturday, we were doing this month, because he's been out of town for the last week or so. I'll get to make sure that we have that. But I think those have been taken off of this agenda, so I think this reflects effectively what we have of course tonight, so I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda. Move to Ms. Lynn Sue Johnson, Commissioner Ferguson, second. All in favor, approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. We always like to ask any citizens that have a response or would like to speak to any of the agenda items on our agenda tonight, to come up and sign in at this time, so that you can be recognized at the proper time. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any of the items on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak tonight? We'll move on. County Mayor for four, Mayor Tannen.
I know we're in a kind of a time pressure for some of the county commissioners who wanna go to council, so a lot of the stuff I've covered last week, the Royal Couple additions, I will add. The first one is the landfill, the construction on that has already started, they're actually moving soil and things around today. So from the time they began construction to the time of end, they said they'd take about five weeks, so they actually began about last Thursday, so hopefully about mid-November they'll be done with that. They are working on that project seven days a week, so they're gonna straight through. Next is the street skate project. We did have the pre-construction meeting in my office last Friday. Everything went really well, covered issues such as the street closings. They're gonna give us at least forty-eight hours notice before they close any of the streets here, so we can let the public know, and also so the emergency services are made aware of any street closings, so everyone can plan accordingly. And we did cover the bricks that were donated through the Downtown Revitalization Committee. Those bricks are gonna be preserved and given to the Public Works Department. We have a building out, the power con facility, we're gonna store those in until we find a project for use for those bricks. Did hold a homeless forum this morning, actually had more people attend than I expected. I think it went really well. Commissioner Russell was there as the Veteran Services Officer. I think she made a contact that's rather gonna help her address the issue of veteran homelessness and getting them services. And unlike some of the conferences I went to, as soon as it ended, not everybody ran out the door, they actually stood around and talked to each other, so I think it went very well. I've gotten feedback from some of the organizations that were there, and they were very glad that it occurred, and they were very happy with the outcome. I think we've got a good base to build off of, is go forward, trying to adjust homelessness and tries to account, and that's not just for talking about the people here on the street, that could also apply to people that are facing homelessness, people that may be looking at going into the criminal justice system, and also veterans that maybe have or facing homelessness because of mental health issues or substance abuse issues. I think we had a real good meeting today, I think we'll make progress on that going forward. For the county website, right now, it looks like the most probable date for the training for the departments that are gonna be editing their own pages. Right now, it looks like it's gonna be November first from about nine to noon, so hopefully we'll move forward on that as the website nears completion, and that way we'll be able to take it over, and each department will be able to edit their own page and put our current up-to-date information. We did receive notice from the Comptroller's Office that the budget has been accepted, so we're glad to have that behind us. And also, the Comptroller's Office, the gentleman that we worked with during the budget process called last week when Ms. Thomas was on vacation and just wanted to let us know how appreciative he was for how our budget was put together, and he said it was very easy to get through, you could really tell what was on there, he went through it in a couple of hours, even with some distractions, and really was able to understand it for the first read-through. So he was very appreciative of how we put that budget together, and so I would thank Ms. Thomas that she's the one that put it together, really just say she did a great job on putting that together, so it's as clear as possible. And for the last item, I did send some, we did send some flowers to the Memorial for Betty Lou Taylor, and the family did send a thank you card back, so they were very appreciative of the flowers sent to that memorial service, I just wanted to pass that along. If anybody wants to see the card, I have it with me, so I just wanted to pass that along, let the commission know that they were appreciative. And I also talked to some of the Whites when Mr. White passed away, and they were very appreciative for any of your well wishes and thoughts for the family as well. And that's my report for the evening, unless there's any questions from any of the commissioners on anything I presented.
Anyone have a question for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go into committee reports. Budget time, met October twenty-fourth.
We did, and a lot of the files that we were getting out was discussed, everything, I don't think any of it was turned out, I think everything was in the policy of the method.
And County Buildings, Cores, and Government Enforcement, met on September twenty-fourth. And several items, divisions, they've come over. There was no old business, now new business. Jimmy Hunter, Director of Senior Assistance Center, has brought up a bit of a problem for our attention as far as with Neil Humphreys and some others that are using the facility for other things, and they have to be gone. Who's gonna be in charge, who's gonna be responsible for rebuilding the facilities there? And that's one thing we were looking into. There were several suggestions, and we're gonna bring them back up at our next meeting, who has to try to bring some ideas, things to do to correct that. Also, there was some discussion of selling some property. There's a road over here behind a building on Turf Street, it's Wilton Street, come corner, that's basically an alley that's been abandoned. We're gonna possibly declare it abandoned property and either lease it, sadly, we're looking at options on that as well, as to how it would be handled. We're looking at the possible uses for the courthouse as far as office space over here, possibly moving the elections offices over here, we would have to probably build a better handicap ramp and some things like that, so we're still looking into those things. And we don't, I think it's consensus of the committee that we don't want to bring offices back in here until we make some improvements to the building that we feel are absolutely necessary before we start moving back in, unless it's something on a temporary basis and one of the offices that are already in good shape. Mayor gave us an update on the committee progress on the dirt, the uncat properties in the county, and we have a few poor patches in the works right now that I think once we get a little, make a little correction for those, it might go back to many of them. Was discussion on this reducing the lot size, they have to go before the planning commission again, and then back to us to final decision on that. But that was basically the building and cores, we will have another meeting this month, we have to thank you. Big case number five, committee, met October tenth.
We did, and it was a very basic one, it just goes in overview of the status of school system, around, everything looked like, uh, it all started, no problems, except still leaving most of it. That seems to be a problem anywhere you look. The answer is, you pay it with good money for it, you're probably lose to do it, and I believe. That's according to what we've been doing during that.
Agent Taylor, say, executive committee?
Yes, executive committee, we met earlier in the month.
October first.
Mm-hmm. And with, several things were discussed, one thing very important, fuel tax was discussed, and after a week of discussion, it was basically decided that we put over the rest of it next year. Second thing is, I was three acres, one acre zone, what I just talked about, was referred back to the building committee. Park Chief, which was still in emergency planning committee, and the mayor talked like it was a government seat, and asked me what I had on that, and let's see, it was announced by our student representative, we can call out what's real estate matter, and didn't have a lot of oil, and it's pretty low, like to me, it's over here.
The Law enforcement committee met October twenty-second, here courthouse at seven o'clock. We had two items, one is review of noise ordinance, make recommendations as to how we can be springing or changing the meeting, and ask every member that's involved in the meeting to look that over, trying to gather information from other jurisdictions as to how they, how they create theirs and how they enforce theirs. So we'll be taking that back at the end of this month. Also, there's a dispute that's arisen between the sheriff and the director's school, so that's our host, high school buildings, buildings, billing of such. We discussed that, it was our convention that it was not our map, the law, that's stripped between the sheriff and the director's school, and I think that that will be worked out in the near future. Parks and Rec, we all didn't have one. Prison oversight, met October tenth.
We did, and Warren was there, he didn't have a complete list that he usually does of how all the staff is going, but he gave a real good overview of it. He also discussed the incident that happened out there a few weeks back, the lady getting attacked, and she's seen, been coming along pretty good, but she don't lose her beliefs well, and he's been working really close with that, and also told us the next month, the next meeting, it's been January, that we didn't have another one, his assistant wasn't there, so we're gonna issue a meeting another one, so I think he's gone up to only three, he's never met two of them, he's got another one coming, pushing out, and it's a good meeting, very good overview.
Ferguson, number five, met October twenty-first, this is the board meeting.
We did, got to go on, finance, we know we're selling lines with the mayor, and to me, it's nothing that they complain about, so meeting went very well.
Are there, are there others that can buy that with the, uh, finance? Well, if we can.
It's directly against the charter.
The park system, it has to have it, it doesn't say that it has to be a stand-alone committee, so it's a problem, it's gonna go up in the vote by then, but it could be something that says it has to be a separate effort. We're looking at that, that's one thing, we'll make sure this task force is started, and the board making changes, and file a little extra time.
I would, I would ask a really good chance for you to answer that, so I mean, I'm not your last question, I would love to just, just briefly, you know, we're exploring a lot of that, really, doing that, doing that, because we do, we do work.
Are there any other boards change meetings that have been missing? Any other reports?
No meeting. Not a meeting, no meeting.
I think, I don't, didn't say the major going just down a list, or we do, that there are meetings, and it's kind of, in my opinion, makes it look bad to our gallery, that no meeting, no meeting, no meeting, I'm good at that, so I was trying to get away from that, which is why we discussed the ones that we needed to have. Our active business tonight, we have several items. First is appointments. We have the duty package, two appointments to the Emergency Communications District Board, or better known as the nine-one-one board. These are served, all members of this serve by position, or is made up by their position who holds that position within the county. These are both reappointments. Camilla White, who is our current hostmaster, Jerry Hound, who is representing the Urban Services District, he currently serves, and these are both reappointments. Have a motion to approve these?
Yes.
Commissioner Gregor?
Second.
Second, I'm in talk. Commissioner Gregor makes a motion, Commissioner Hart makes a second.
Which group are these?
I believe they are four-year terms, starting in January, April twenty-second. Looking on the back of that sheet, the letter's from nine-one-one board. Any other questions? If we have a motion to approve these? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. Next, we have two resolutions for consideration tonight. The first resolution, twenty nineteen twenty-four six seventy-one, is a resolution to assign statutory authority to the commission chair and pro pen. This will discuss some high facts a few months back about these individuals, I think we've seen them either the budget finance committee, or the district committee, or both, but we failed to do a resolution on it, so this is to follow through on that at this time, and this is so that if the mayor is in capacity to write a panel, the chairman can sign checks, the documents for the county, or the postal is throughout pro pen, and that's all this is. Any questions about this?
Any questions to approve?
Have a motion by Commissioner Volner, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next resolution is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty-five six seventy-two. It's a resolution for Tri County Electric Newship Corporation on the Tennessee wrong and accessibility grant application. Parts of the grant application in the state, letters of, uh, recommendations from the bodies, the governing bodies, or individual elected officials, things of this nature, helps him a great deal when they're scoring these grant applications, it kind of gives him extra points, if that makes sense. So that's all this is, we've done it every year, I think, for at least the last two years, maybe three years or more, but any questions about this? Commissioner Ellis, have a motion to approve, Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Ford, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. And if you did have a letter in your, uh, package that you, if you're so inclined to designate individually as commissioners, we turn those into big, these are packages here, mainly them, I know several have already been turned in, we've mailed several, but if you still have yours, you'll turn it in, I will make sure that it's mailed, or you can mail it yourself if you're so inclined. Also, real quickly, I'd like to give you an update on where we are with the vital communication to the Tri County. I know that as commissioners, we are often asked questions about where they are, and where, when are they gonna get the meeting, and all these types, and so I tend to give you an update on that, I mentioned Paul Thompson at length last week and this week, Dave. Right now, there's only eight hundred locations in the triads from the Southeastern Governor Counties are now connected to, to the wrong. We can honestly say that the triad county is now a deep community. They make a big deal out of it, mental management being a deep community, where we are a deep community, but you could put that better in the county. Right now, the services base is about two thousand locations, two thousand individuals, there's about eight hundred that have signed up for it at this time. So almost half are, I think it's half, they're taking rates to forty-five, forty-seven percent, something that's, that may include about what was projected, what was expected, and they really haven't done a lot of, um, marketing yet to try to sign up to people. Most of them, half of them, have done a base offering on fifty-fifty, uh, they're fighting for that. They are predicting that they would have about a hundred more homes on plan by the end of the year, by the end of the year, about a hundred more. They are gonna apply for these grants, program, to get the grants, and they can do a little bit more of it quickly. The project completion, right now, they're thinking spring of next year, they will have all the homes in the area that they're gonna be agents or voting, so hopefully by late spring, early summer, a lot of that depends on whether, things of that nature. So that's, that's where we're at, it's proceeding very well, haven't had any negative comments that I know about. Mayor, do you know of any negative comments from people that have signed up for it, received?
Not, not of anyone that signed up for, I've only heard very positive comments, and they were all grateful to have it, so.
I know it's like a new world, my house, I'm really glad to be back. So I just wanna give you an update on that, as it's coming forward. Moving on, next we have budget amendments. These budget amendments were all approved by Budget Finance Committee. Most, all of them are infine transfers or lenses coming in, or grants, or donations, or things of that nature. We can take these collectively, or we can pull them out, if somebody wants to pull one out, we'll go that route. Commissioner Wall, take a motion to the board?
One, we should, you?
It's done. We're gonna take them collectively, and most take them collectively, so Commissioner Wall, second, or Commissioner Jones. Anybody want to pull any of these out of the one-on-one phone? Anybody have any questions about this? I can offer them to explain if you need to. They're all, all of these are money coming, bigger than a grant, but, okay? Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not, we need to go through all of them. One forty-one, General's Food Fund, basically the same thing, he's putting up the increase for grants that have come in, and that's food programs, subjects from the audit commission, uh, Walmart donations, state student grants. There was one, the first one, is health services, it was a discrepancy, the work list is, you could place it on the, uh, the original budget, and this is to reconcile it and bring it back in. If we take all of these together, we're going out separately, we see any? What's with? Have a motion by Commissioner Ford to approve the all together. Have a second by Commissioner Peaky. Any questions? If I understand. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one powder tonight, uh, here with six ten. Do you have any other, or, or, or? Any questions? Have a motion by Commissioner Wall to approve the note reading. Second by Commissioner Lynn Sue Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any other business, with the committee? Any other business tonight? Have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Peaky. And second, uh, Mr. Jackson. All in favor?
We must be for the end here.
We all adjourn.